All right, we're good.
Okay, it's 7:00 PM, August 5th, 2025, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Time to call the City of Torrington and the Wetlands Commission to Order, serving on the Commission this evening are members Christine Altman, Adrian Farv, Jeremy DeCarly, myself, Jay Bate, also present is Nate Nardi Cyrus, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer and Assistant City Planner. Next on the agenda is a note for the June 26, 2025, recording of meeting, site walk. There was no forum, so this is just a note for the record. And next is the July 1st, next is the July 1st, 2025, meeting minutes. I have the motion for approval.
I move that we approve the July 1st, 2025, meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Any motion carries. Next is the July 8th, 2025, special meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the July 8th, 2025, special meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Abstain.
One abstention. Right. And next is the public hearing. And we might as well read what was in the paper first.
Do we need to have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I guess we could. I don't think it makes any difference.
It doesn't. I move that we open the public hearing for Alan Borgesi, 3651 Torringford Street, Assessors Map, 253 Block 002, Lot 002, for building expansion and parking lot construction in the Wetlands.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next is what was printed in the paper.
Okay, legal notice. The Inland Wetlands Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, in the City Hall Auditorium, Room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, at 7:00 PM for 3651 Torringford Street by Alan Borgesi to expand an industrial building and parking lot construction in Wetlands. Copies of the above-mentioned application and plans are on file in the Land Use Office, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Jay Bate Jr., Chair Planning, oops, wrong one, Wetlands Commission, dated in Torrington, Connecticut, this 21st and 28th days of July, 2025.
Okay, now that that's all taken care of, I guess it's up to Alan.
My name is Alan Borgesi. I'm a registered civil engineer with Borgesi Building and Engineering Company. However, the reason I'm here is not for Borgesi Building and Engineering Company. I am part owner of the building just to the north of the piece of property we're under discussion. Now, I'm going to repeat some things that we did once before for the application, everybody that's listening. I bought this property with the owner of the business a number of years ago, and they have transferred ownership to new management. And it's kind of interesting because I always looked at this piece of property to the south of our property, which is the property here under discussion. And presently, it's a house, a couple of barns, and a horse pasture. When you own a piece of industrial land, you always look at property next to it because if there's any need to expand the building you have there, this could be the only opportunity to do it. The present building I own is about 93,000 square feet. Between the building and the parking lot, it is substantially occupied, and they have about 130 employees. I met with them a couple of months ago and talked to them about the fact that maybe I should approach the neighbor and see if the land is for sale for expansion. And the present management said, listen, we have several years left on the lease. We're not interested in talking about any additional expenses or expansion at this point. But I talked to my partners, who are the owners, and we decided to pursue the land to the south, which is four acres in size, and it's industrial zone. So I decided to start investigating it. And the first thing on investigation is we check for wetlands and other zoning regulations, that sort of thing. And right in the middle of the land, there is a wetlands. And Tom Stansfield is my soil scientist, and I'd like him to explain what the wetlands consist of so everybody understands it. Tom?
Everybody here in the back, can you hear okay? Okay, let's check it.
Evening, everybody. Good to see you all again. For the record, my name is Tom Stansfield. I'm a professional soil scientist with Stansfield Environmental Science Services, LLC. I've been mapping. And I feel I'm somewhat of an expert on them. I was approached by Mr. Borgesi to take a look at this property, and as you can see it on the map, it looks pretty severe. Now, we did have a site walk out there. Ms. Altman was present. I think that's the only one on the board now that was present for that walk. What has happened out here, as defined in Connecticut, we use soils exclusively. As we test board throughout this property, it was clear that they were poorly drained and somewhat poorly drained soils on the property. And these had been significantly impacted over the many years of agricultural use, using it for horse rearing and somewhat for residential use as well. The area had been significantly modified over those years. Speaking with the property owner, he's moved soil around, he's pushed drainage left and right wherever it suited his particular needs. He's even constructed some structures in what now is shown to be wetland soils. These soils were identified purely by the fact that they are poorly drained. And the uses throughout these many years have compacted the overburden, the soils above, and created a situation where we can no longer absorb as much water as we would like to see a wetland soil do. So basically, it's compacted topsoil and manure on top of hardpan. And what's happening is, in the strictest interpretation, they are considered wetland soils because they are poorly drained. And we have in the code these man-made wetland soils, which are significantly impacted soils such as these. Most of what we saw out there on our site walk were these compacted soils. There were some areas that were less impacted, but they have also been cleared, and they've been used for pasture for the horses. We did identify a few species of non-facultative wet plants out there, obligate plants that can survive in both wet and dry areas, and they are doing their best to survive out there with the horses intervening and the mowing and everything else that's happening out there. So we did see a few species out there. We did see some poorly drained soils, but they are not functioning the way that this wetland would have functioned had it never been used in the conditions, under the conditions it was used. The use that it was under was what's considered a use permitted by right. That farming activity is something that is within the state guidelines, use permitted by right. So there's not that we're looking to the farmer and saying, hey, what have you done to the land? This is the result of a use permitted by right. There was a small pocket of, it was probably some kind of retention basin or something like that in the back of the property that had a little more vegetation to it. It had some water, standing water in it. It's also hemmed in by the industrial building, by that massive manure pile and by the barns and the pastures. So there was no other functioning, strongly functioning wetland on the property. Are there any questions on that? Ms. Altman, did you have any questions from the site walk, for example, or anything that didn't get explained well?
I have a question, just in trying to understand how you characterize between poorly drained soils, and then later you talked about it doesn't absorb as much as we'd like. What does that mean? Like, I would think that poorly drained soils aren't particularly absorbent, right?
Well, it's an interesting paradox because, yes, they are rather absorbent because normally they have a really heavy organic mat over the top of them, which you can equate to a sponge.
Okay.
And this sponge has been, if you take any sponge, this sponge has been compressed down to the point where I no longer have the air pockets available or the naturally occurring pockets within that soil profile that would store that water and absorb it and allow it to release slowly. Now, this is where we get our cleaning, this is where we get our filtration, this is where we get our nutrient mitigation because it's allowed to chemically react with all this, with this time and this water and some air. This has been compressed to the point that although any argument can be made that the water does hold up in it, it's not functioning the way this nice fluffy sponge ever would now, if that makes any sense.
So just to clarify what you're saying, you're saying that the value of the wetlands area is more about the organic matter above the poorly drained soils than what is determined as the wetland soils themselves?
Well, wetland soils are defined in Connecticut as poorly drained. So typically, what we see is we see an organic topsoil, per se, an A horizon, typically over a B horizon that's either, you know, a silty loam or sandy loam or some kind like that. And then, in this particular case, that's now over top of a compact glacial till. What we have here is, with these soils, probably where was mostly the organic topsoil, right down to the organic till, or the compact till, which is very typical. That's a ridge berry. That's what we call a ridge berry. Very little B horizon, if any. And that's usually where we see the modeling and we see all this discoloration due to the water piling up on top of the compact till. Well, we really don't have as much of that because that has been all compacted, just like the compact till, same soil. We've applied the same principle. We just put a, you know, 2,000-pound animal on it and pounded it down instead of a, you know, 2,000-foot glacier. So that B horizon isn't functioning the way it was. The A horizon has been compressed down to where it's not functioning the way it was. When you look at the core functions, is it cleaning the water? Well, the water's moving through it pretty quickly. It's not getting the cleansing that you would get, as I described earlier, with the organic soils. Is it recharging the water system? We're not allowing this water to hang there because the compact glacial till will take water, but it's only after time when it has had enough water on top of it to infiltrate into that compact glacial till. That's just physics. So it's not having the time to hang out there. Have we reduced the flood risk? Well, not necessarily because this water's moving right through that pasture area. He doesn't want it to flood. He's moving that water. So this water has moved right along. And the habitat for fish, wildlife, even plants, if you wanted to include it, has been minimized by, what I argued was, you know, I called it a monoculture before, and Nate corrected me, it's not a monoculture, but there's many plants out there. But these plants are no longer the wetland species that we would expect to see.
Okay.
On that map, are there some areas where the wetlands are better than others?
Better. Are there areas less impacted? I would say, perhaps, I would say up by Torringford Road, I saw less compaction. That area also is the gateway where he drove in, he's been driving in. It could be argued that this wetland actually has been expanded by the use, by compacting these soils down. And that's where I get into this definition of a man-made wetland or, you know, such an impacted area as you've actually created wetlands. It's very possible. Now, I wasn't here 50 years ago, I can't tell you, but there are areas that had less evidence of compaction. But if you look at the area where you're going to see on the site plan soon, which is the central area where the house is, the barns are, the main paddocks, those areas are just obliterated.
Hey, you can point that out later as we see the...
Sure, sure, yeah.
Also, for context, is the Commission interested in seeing, do you want to see the near map photo, like the aerial photo of this that we have? That might help a little bit.
May I continue?
Sure.
Okay, so I got together with the partners, and to protect the property next door and to protect our investment, we decided to pursue this four-acre parcel of land. In my analysis, the desire to allow for expansion of my Dymax building, I thought about it, and I said to myself, what happens if I cannot and they never want expansion of the building? Now, I have invested $400,000 for the purchase, plus probably $25,000 or $30,000 in engineering fees, to purchase a piece of land, and let's see what alternate uses it could be used for. So I came up with a sketch of a quick site plan, which I'd like to pass out, using the fact that we had to mitigate some area and sort of limited development. And on this plan, I'm going to say this to you, I drew a building 75 feet from the front street, which is set back by zoning regulations against residential zone, and 25 feet on the side. I'm going to give everybody a copy of this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alan, do you have another copy of this for sharing on the screen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, no, I didn't know if you had another copy on... You do? Okay, so I'll just zoom in on that for everyone else to see. Yeah, I'll just do that. So I'm going to stop sharing the near map image and zoom in.
There are two possible places for mitigation that was requested. One on the south side of the property. And every building I laid out, when I put the mitigation on the south side of the building, it was kind of interesting for me because there was nowhere on the site that I could come up with and have a trailer truck turn around. Because if you build an industrial building, you have to have loading docks. And the loading docks generally are toward the lower side of the lot. And I had the trucks facing north and south, which is the way they would back into a building, and they literally did not fit. So I drew a sketch, I just gave you the sketch, of a building, again, 75 feet from the front property line, 25 feet from each property line, and I drew it in a sense with the mitigation area to the west. Yes. Anyway, and what I discovered is, no matter how hard I tried, the biggest building I could build on that lot, allowing for mitigation, is 20,000 square feet. Now I had to make an economic analysis. Do I want to invest $400 plus $1,000 on a piece of land that has a capability of maximum 20,000 square feet? And I decided that this was not a worthwhile investment, even though I'm starting off to invest as an expansion for the building next door. This wasn't going to work out unless the building next door did expand, and if I didn't, I was going to take a significant financial loss. So it's my decision that if I have to have this mitigation, I will not proceed with this purchase. But let me go on. I'd like to do is bring Tom Stansfield back up and testify of something he volunteered to me, I didn't ask him about it, about, number one, his relationship with his feelings on the land, and perhaps his relationship when he was on the board in Goshen. Tom, do you mind talking?
Yeah, we could get me in some trouble here. I'd preface to say there's virtually no industrial land in Goshen, right? So for me to have seen an application like this in Goshen is probably, to the scales, I don't see those. But I have been in front of many, many Commissions before with other commercial proposals and the mitigation that they have asked for or that we have tried to work with. The paper that you have in front of you, I think I'm going to go back to my original argument, which was, this was a use permitted by right. And we didn't do what's been done to this property. So to then put an expansive mitigation project on this isn't necessarily creating a wetland out there. By definition, I mean, we could create a poorly drained area, but we're not going to create a vibrant wetland, you know, that's going to have, in a retention pond. I'm sure you've seen enough of these over the years to see that, yes, we can grow some cattails, and we can grow many of these facultative plants around there, but a good landscaping plan would do the same thing. What this needs to operate as is pick up the functions that weren't being done by this wetland, which is prevent flood, okay? Give that water time to pond and infiltrate and move off the property. And we saw the outlet for this property. It's next to Dymax. There's already an existing drainage system out there. So to put an extensive mitigation project on this isn't, in my opinion, having done this for many years, isn't necessarily the goal, shouldn't be the goal here. We need to put the engineering in place so that we don't mess up any other wetlands downstream, per se. But to try to create something that's already been gone for X number of years, however long that agricultural use was there, being presented in front of me, I wouldn't necessarily see the value of, you know, in my mind, it wouldn't be a vibrant, valuable wetland. It would be an excavated hole with some wetland plants in the bottom of it that are struggling because they're not always going to be wet. So that was my opinion on where, having seen a lot of these, I understand where you guys sit, you know, we can't just obliterate all these wetlands. My argument would be, we're not, these wetlands have been obliterated. They are defined as wetlands in Connecticut, but the value and the function of the area that's being impacted has been done. It's already gone.
Did you want me to touch on anything else, or?
Any questions on that? I know it has an opinion, it's not scientific fact, but...
You know, it's kind of interesting, Tom said something I'd heard. This piece of wetlands is not attached to any wetlands downstream. Downstream is site's parking lot. It had wetlands once, and it has been disturbed, so there's no wetlands downstream. I'm going to repeat something that I'd just like to have every commissioner consider. With every building we build, with every time you start your car, there is a detriment to the ecology at a minor degree. On the other hand, with every development we build, with people going to work in the morning and getting to work, there's a benefit. I'd like this commission to weigh the benefit of the development of this piece of land or leave it residential. I mentioned it once before. I believe that with the tariffs and all the government regulations that are coming up, industry will want to come back to America. They don't have to come to Torrington, they don't have to come to Connecticut. If we make land available for them, we make life easy for them to build, they will come and they will bring jobs and prosperity. If we decide not to go that direction, it's understood, there's nothing personal against anybody here. For me, it's a pure business decision. I'm 81 years old, I won't be here 25 years from now, for sure. But I'd like this commission to consider allowing this development to be built without the mitigation that we discussed.
Now, Alan, can I clarify something? This plan that you just presented us, this is the plan that you're saying is not financially feasible for you, and you would not do it if this is what would be approved?
This is a plan. This is not the plan that we are talking about for this development. Remember, we all agree that the plan I showed was a tentative plan. I'm not sure I'll ever build that plan. I was trying to illustrate a possibility for this land and why I was buying it. That plan is not the definitive plan, but I can't afford to buy a piece of land that I find eventually that the Wetlands Commission will prohibit me from making a reasonable development.
Okay.
So neither plan is correct, neither plan is the final plan I'm asking for permission to do. I'm only asking permission to alter that non-functional wetland.
But both plans that have come before us are not the plan?
None of these plans are the real final construction plan that is correct.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, just to, I think the point that Christine's getting at Alan is that the Commission's job is to approve a plan, and whether that plan changes down the road, you know, kind of, it has to be modified at that point down the road, but they can't approve a hypothetical, like it has to be, you know, it has to be an actual plan that they're approving.
Well, then you could look at it, but you understand my intention here. It could be, excuse me. Yeah, I was just going to say that. The first plan I submitted was the plan that I would like to use as the application plan. But I don't ever want this commission or any commission, anywhere, to say Alan misled us. Even at that point, when I put that plan together, it was a good plan. If that plan is approved, I'm a happy person. It gives me the opportunity to make a development that is worthwhile on the site. So that answers your question, Nate?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do, Alan, is I'm going to share the plan that you brought. So this is the, we'd had a prior meeting that had been a kind of informal, pre-application-type meeting, but now that the public hearing is open, we need to make sure that it's all, everything's on the record, and I think, you know, we don't want to confuse the prior meeting and make sure anything discussed there, you know, is reshown and on the record for this public hearing. So what I'm going to do, Alan, I'm going to share the original plan, right? And is this, this is the one that, so this is the one that you're looking for approval, but you've explored other options based on the recommendations from the Commission to have some kind of mitigation in exchange for, you know, filling the entirety of the wetland, right? So I'm posting this on here. This is the plan, the plan that you're looking to get approved, Alan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I can zoom in a little on it as well.
So on this plan, that water quality basin, that's wet bottom?
I guess.
It's wet?
It's wet pond, correct.
Can I ask on this other plan that you are proposing, like, why doesn't this building attach like it does in your initial plan?
What I tried to do, Christine, is on that second plan I gave you, is I had to make a decision that if Dymax did not want to expand, what am I left with? Am I left with anything reasonably that I could develop? That's the reason I did that. And in business, you have to look at alternatives. What happens if everything goes correctly? What happens if everything does not go correctly? And my partners talked to me about that, and so I made that sketch up about a week and a half ago. And I said, this is about the biggest building I could build with all the setbacks, all the requirements, and still be functional. Now, it's kind of interesting because my driveway is something I'm not even sure that state would accept, but I had to have a way of turning the trucks around, making a U-turn, backing into the loading dock area. But it's significantly an accurate plan to scale of what was the maximum development I could do. And I felt it wasn't adequate for me to make the investment.
I thought the whole point of this endeavor was that it was a way of enticing Dymax to stay in Torrington.
My answer is that is correct because I want them to stay as a tenant, on the other hand, and that's why I'm willing to risk the money to do it. But if they leave and the next person does not want the land, or even if they stay and they feel the facility is adequate with it is, do I want to say, well, I wasted $400,000? That's the question.
Okay.
I have to be business prudent.
The plan that I'm seeing on the screen, that's the plan that you want to do?
That's the plan I intend to do with the expansion for Dymax.
The one that you did was just showing us that the lot is too small to put a viable building on.
That's correct.
Okay. So I was getting confused about the second...
So I was getting confused about the second plan, which is really off the tape. That's just to show us that it's too small for you to build. Okay. So getting back to the new plan.
The old plan.
The old, well, yes, the plan that you're intending to build. Can you point out where the, the better wetlands were that were not disturbed?
The better wetlands is right up near Torringford Street. Right here. Yeah.
You could probably.
That's, this is right there, right there.
Right in there, okay.
Okay.
And you wouldn't say that.
And actually, Nathan, I'm wrong, it's actually probably beyond the property line.
I'm, I'm sorry, Alan.
It's probably beyond the property line.
Oh, like up, up into the, the right of way?
Yeah, it is actually in the right of way. And I, I mean, would you agree that that area probably showed the least impact? But now, now we're looking at the plan, that is way up on that right of way. I should be on the microphone. But that, that southeast corner. That, that's not viable wetland, it's just, it's not as bad as the rest. Yeah, I guess that's a fair, yeah, if you want to describe it that way. It still qualifies as inland wetlands just as much as the rest of it does. It was, let's say, but it was easier to delineate that area than the rest of it because the rest of it took a lot of work to find where that impacted area. That's, that's functioned better than the rest. It's, it's had the same impacts. It, it really has, it's, it's been mowed, it's been driven over. It's, it's had the same impacts. You asked what the best part was? I mean, the, the best part of the rotten car is that.
I, I have a question. Mr. Stansfield, as far as the statute goes, does it qualify that we regulate differently based on the quality of the wetlands or whether the wetlands are man-made or not?
Nope, that's your decision. The, the, the statute asks me to define wetlands by soil type. If it doesn't have a soil type that is still poorly drained, we call it, you know, Eudorthens, we call them man-made wetlands. From that, what, once I, once I hand you the science, the commission then has the latitude to say what, what gets permitted within that area. We're asking for permission to continue to use this impacted area because it's already been impacted. So that's, that's where our, that's what we're trying to explain on our side to you that there are wetlands that need to be protected, there are wetlands that have been impacted to the point that we're not looking at the functions anymore. Is it still a wetland? I'll, I'll never tell you it's not a wetland because it is, it's by state statute, it's a wetland.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, looking at the plan for the water quality basin.
Yes.
The new proposed addition, that's going directly into the water quality basin. And then it goes out pretty much to the same spot where the old roof drains went to, correct?
These were the discharge from the old roof drains.
Now, that old roof drain, is that going away?
No, the existing roof drain.
You're going to keep that existing roof drain?
Excuse me, that was buried there, will have to go away. And that, that roof will drain onto my roof.
And that'll, will that go into the water quality basin?
No, what I'm trying to accomplish here is that the, all of the pavement goes in the water quality basement. Roof water drains and, and bypasses the water quality basement and, and so that's not part of this.
Because it looks like in your plan, there's a, the line that goes to your building.
Can I, can I walk over to see which look there?
See it?
Is it not up there?
Well, we have it up there, but do you have a version of it on the? This, this line that goes up to like where the 300 is, right there. Okay. And what's, what's this line? That.
I wonder.
That's what I, to me, it looked like that was where the roof drain was.
Is that a footing drain or?
One of them is labeled as this existing yard drains.
That's the one up here, right?
Yeah, what I was questioning is whether that.
Oh, I know the answer to that.
Five inch PVCs being abandoned.
I know the answer to that.
I was asking, is that going to go into the water quality basin?
You, you will see that that pipe only connects to, to the roof drains to the east. And the reason is because I wanted to match the existing runoff that went into the detention pond to the new runoff. So part of the existing building, draining from the roof of the existing building to the new building picks up that 12-inch PVC line, you see that? It's about half, half the 300 foot of frontage on the, on the, on the building.
Yep.
And the other half picks up the other half of the roof because I have to match the roof flow that it was previously in the design. If, if that wasn't clear, I'll say it differently. You understand it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, can you zoom in a little more?
Sure, is there anywhere?
Basin.
By the basin?
Yeah, just, just bring it up farther, yeah, that's.
You will notice on that, it goes to the 8-inch PVC line, you see it right along the building? That's only to pick up those half drains and that one half of, of the building.
Why don't you pick up both halves?
Because the, the other half would be the excess runoff that I want to trap into the detention basin for no additional runoff. I was trying to match the roof runoff.
Yeah, but I'm wondering why don't you have all your roof drains going into the water quality basin?
I, I don't, roof drains aren't necessarily want to go into water quality basin. You have to size water quality basin, the amount of runoff. Water quality basins generally are just off asphalt. And because that's the area required, the runoff off a roof is actually clean water. I could reroute them into the water quality basin. I would then make a larger water quality basin, which probably does not function as well.
So all the water from the parking lot will go through the water quality basin? There's not going to be any runoff on any neighboring properties?
No. It's actually, there's a fair cut there on land.
And the existing buffer between your parking lot and the neighbor
The east.
Next to it? I can't remember what their name was on there, but those are going to stay, the Merrick property? Going to be a buffer between the.
You're, you're down, you're talking to property to the south?
Yes.
No, we don't know what will happen there. It's, this is an indication again of what I need as far as this meeting. That may change, the building may get longer, larger, it may get smaller, I really don't have.
But the property that abuts, the part of your plan that abuts the Merrick property, is that going to remain to have vegetation, so there'll be a buffer?
I don't know. At least 25 feet of it will be, but beyond that, now remember, that's industrial park zone also.
I think at our preliminary meeting, when you came to gather information, I thought that we had asked you to look into taking the green space around the parking lot, starting from the area that has like some wetlands in it that won't be as disturbed and wrapping around to the detention basin and using that to offset the wetlands that were being destroyed so that you could use how you, how you drained from the parking lot and the types of plants that were planted to satisfy zoning requirements to create, to create like something that would have some ecological value as an offset. That was not, I don't think, like a full mitigation plan. It was just to kind of use water that would already be draining to create a, just a, a, a area that wasn't particularly expensive to do that would offset the wetlands that the parking lot would be going on top of.
Christine, two, two plans were sent to me as suggestions for mitigation. One was the south, which is against the other industrial land, and the other was the west. And, and that was, that was the plan that was suggested to me to use. And again, for my flexibility of knowing that I could have future use, the one to the south will not work. It will not allow me any development of any building at all because it simply doesn't tell a truck turnaround.
Because why?
Taylor truck turnaround on that little sketch I gave you. You see that indented area, that's where, that's where I, I planned on.
No, I have no idea what you're.
Okay, let me, I should have drawn a truck on there.
Oh, and this, in this plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that plan's off the table.
This plan is off the table. I'm looking at, I'm looking at your proposed addition and parking lot. And I'm looking at the green space that's to the south of the parking lot from the southeast corner to the detention basin.
That will be green, yes, that will be planted between that and the state right of way will be planted. That's required by zoning.
Right, but couldn't it be planted in such a way and couldn't the parking lot be, be, I don't know what the correct word is, drained in such a way that you are creating compensatory wetlands to, you know, that you allow to grow up in that from the southeast to the southwest border of the property?
Okay, I'm going to say to you that the property on Torringford Street is much higher in grade than my parking lot. That driveway actually slopes downhill by two, four, six feet. So my parking lot is six feet lower than the street at that point, but I can't drain hard.
We can't drain towards the south because the, so do we, we don't have any topology on this?
Yeah.
Do I see it very light?
Well, this, see these dark, these are the grades where he's sheet flowing across the driveway to these catch basins. You can see it starts higher here and then he's proposing a regrade. And the existing contours are the lighter color.
More or less following the existing contours as far as I can tell.
Okay.
But couldn't you create where it would sheet flow off part of it? And help purify the water and actually reduce the size of your water quality basin?
I'm sorry.
Well, we can't, we can't sheet flow to that southeast corner. We would have to elevate the parking area in order to drop it, you know, I see.
But you could sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, sort of like a rain garden type of deal to.
Create a wet garden in that area. I mean, is anything possible? Sure, but, but, but you would actually have to elevate the rest of the parking area in order to create that dip down to the southeast. And it's, again, you know, we've all focused on this best area of the wetland, but once we get the mitigation project or, you know, the basin done, you're going to have more potential area for wetland plants to, to propagate than you would ever in this small impacted area.
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure I understood. Just say that one last thing again. The last thing that you said, the last sentence.
I'm not sure if I phrased it well enough to repeat it. The basin that's proposed on the plan that we're all considering now for the public hearing is going to have some wetland species in it.
Okay.
You're always going to have a better chance because we're directing water physically down to that area than we would if we tried to create this ramp into a heavily impacted area. It's, it's, naturally occurring wetlands are way better at everything than whatever we can build. But what, we have the opportunity to build the basin, we have the opportunity to enhance the soils and everything else that we need to do to get the wetland species to grow. That little pocket, we wouldn't have the room, Nate, I don't, maybe you can agree or disagree with this, but we wouldn't have the room to create a meaningful pocket of wetland species. And again, to what end? Because we're not going to create enough of an environment for a lot of species to use that.
Well, and I, I just, for my clarification too, so if we take, if we take the rain garden concept out of that whole southern portion because of the, the pitch of the dry, or like the existing grades and the necessary grades, how deep, like would you, if you were just going to construct an independent, you know, basin depression that was able, would be able to support wetland species, would you have to go down deep enough that it, you couldn't do that or could? You, you get, kind of get what I'm getting, if you just made a depression there, would you be able to?
Creating a depression there, but you've got to feed it with water, so where's that water coming from? So if, if we're relying on Torringford Street to supply the water to that area, that, that's, you're, you're waiting for road runoff to fill that. If you want it to be the parking lot, you know, some of the watershed that you're trapping with this impervious surface, the, the, the topography would have to be shifted so much.
Right.
To, to, to gain enough moisture in that area for a meaningful enough amount of time to support that.
Right, because, because the, so it's my understanding that you have this compacted layer, it's holding water above it. If you remove the compacted layer to get down to groundwater, you'd have to go pretty, pretty deep because it's kind of a, it's a perched wetland on top of the water table.
And seasonally perched, so if you're looking at the wettest times of the year, any of these perched water tables are seasonal. So if you're looking at the wettest times of the year where this water is building up on top of this, you know, semi-impervious area, this, this compact glacial till is pervious, water will go through it. But you've got to pile up so much water on top of it in order to get this zone of saturation to be created for it to actually start flowing. Below that is probably better, you know, more pervious material. What it is, I don't know because we didn't, you know, mine are superficial drawings, I couldn't tell you how deep that till is. Or even if we hit a water table now, whereas historically there may have been one because now we've got this giant state road there and we've, we've constructed drainage system. So I don't know, I can't tell you the hydrology of that area. I'm giving my impression of trying to make something out of that small area with, with the physics involved in getting water to it would be difficult. And would it work? I, I, I think it's a bit of a crapshoot, I, I, I do.
Is, is the wetlands that is there now that is existing, is that being fed by Torringford Street?
Well, it probably is to a certain extent. I don't know what, what, again, hydrology, I don't know why that area has water in it. It's this lack of a decent B horizon that would normally move the water and the compaction that, that's keeping water there in the first place. Any, any soil is a wetland if compacted enough, you know, you just add water. It's, it's, this soil has been compacted to the point that is now classified as wetland. If we were here 100 years ago, I don't know what was there. And the argument could be.
Deal with what's here now.
We have to work with what's here now, but, but, but we're talking about hydrology. So if, if we have created the hydrology through our, our impacts as, as humans, would this wetland have been there before? That's the argument you kind of have to think about. Did we, did we compact this so much that good old Tom came along and said it's now poorly drained? It, it could be. Was there a stretch of wetlands through there and the farmer always used this as a wetland and you always? Could be, I don't know. But what we're left with no longer has those typical characteristics that we would expect. Aside from the soils. You know, we are proposing, you know, certain wetland species around that detention basin. We could come up with a better, or not a better, we could come up with a more intensified plan if that's what you want. I do have a list of species that we could go over with Nate that he might want to see in those areas. We could use the wetland mix on the banks of this to try and encourage some of those species that we even saw on the, on the parcel up in that area. It's one of the few Nate brought up in our very first meeting that there were wetland species and this, that, this area is exactly what he was talking about. And on the sidewalk, we kind of pawed around to look for some of those. You know, that's where they're showing up. Down below, there were a few sedges, but they'll grow anywhere that you've compacted soil, so. You actually have an overlay of what the property looks like now? Where you can overlay what you're planning on doing?
Well, you say overlay, the light lines are the existing grades. And even in this, we show where the, that wetlands is dotted in, you can see that. You see it? Yeah, good, good job, Nate.
I see the wetland.
Yeah, that is, so we tried to show an overlay of everything on one map.
The neighbors would like to see how intrusive the addition is, it's only 120 feet. But how far does that come into the new property? Now, a lot of this is on existing property that you own. Out of the 120 feet, how many, how many feet of that comes on to your new property?
Um, I actually have that map.
That right there?
Little, little more than half.
That's about.
60 feet? 60 feet, a little bit less than 60 feet.
Okay.
Is that right, Alan?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Little less than 60 feet is existing uh, property that you already own.
Starting on the west, you see where that line extends off the off the page? If you kept going across with that, from and that is the existing property line right there, beautiful, Nate. And it goes just out there. That is the existing property for 318 Industrial Lane, which is Dymax.
Maybe that's 50 feet.
Yeah, maybe 50, 60 feet. Okay, that's good.
I may have a different.
Just we get a.
That means it's coming on to the new property 3651 by maybe 70 feet. But then you have the parking lot, which is a bigger.
Right.
Bigger impact, I would say, for the laws. So for me, Alan, you came in to discuss with us and and, you know, you were talking about wanting to do this for the good of Torrington, the good of manufacturing. Um, and that you you just really didn't want to be bothered with any kind of compensatory wetlands nonsense, right? But I think I I felt that that we, you know, and I I'm trying to remember the timeline of this was like two months ago. You know, said you don't have to do any kind of expensive um, compensatory wetlands, but you could use this different species of plants that you're already required to put in for zoning. And you could design your drainage and basin in such a way that is more like compensatory wetlands and use whatever green space possible on the on this plan um, to towards that end. And I think that, you know, I would have wished to have seen um, more consideration of those suggestions uh, on this plan, on the plan that you actually intend to have us vote on than than what I am seeing, you know, tonight, like this, this. I understand that this is supposed to be like that it's not feasible and not a prudent alternative, but I think that there are feasible and prudent alternatives. You know, to, as far as the statute's concerned, doesn't matter whether it's manmade wetlands, it doesn't matter whether it's, you know, millennial, you know, has been there for millennia or whether it's um, whether it's brand new and it doesn't matter the quality. You know, we we as a wetlands commission are supposed to be protecting those those wetlands. So I, you know, I thought that that um, our suggestions were um, pretty pretty like liberal in that, you know, we weren't asking you to spend a fortune, we're just asking you to uh, take into consideration what you could do instead.
Yeah, I agree with you absolutely. We didn't ask for a lot. What would you ask for? Made this possible to develop other than the addition I had here that's feasible. And, you know, again, I won't take this personally. If you feel strongly that you have to go that direction, that's fine, you've made a decision. And I will acknowledge and go along with it. I'm not emotional about this. I have to make a a prudent decision for investors of this piece of property. And if the the compensatory mitigation is required, we we all, I have to just say to you openly, it will not happen. And that's fine. Let's let's make a decision as a town. But this is the answer that we've picked for this particular piece of land. And that's all I can say.
Okay.
Was there something?
I want to ask you something.
Yeah. I have no problem with that quarter, but it won't work.
Well, okay, so. So will it be a wetland? No, that so let's back get back to our southeast corner. All right. Um, that area could be specifically landscaped to support, it's already got poorly drained soils in it, some species that would survive in an area, you know, facultative plants will survive either wet or dry. Certainly, that area could be landscaped to that effect. I don't, I I don't think I'm going to get you cattails there. I'm not going to get you some of the species that we all walk by and say, look at the beautiful wetland. But I could certainly get you the fringe plants to grow in those areas. Uh, and that's just a simple matter of augmenting the soil enough and as we've already got some areas, some poorly drained areas. So if you would like that southeast corner to be more developed with um, you know, sweet pepper bush and and some of the, you know, the yellow birches and things that you would expect to see on the fringes of the wetlands. I think we could probably uh, get those to survive there. I I I hate to see us develop a mitigation plan that was doomed because there's a wetland there, we've got to be able to plant wetland species there. It it that particular spot, you'll see me hopefully in front of your commission someday absolutely defending putting in some of these mitigations because they do belong on some of these sites. This this site is not conducive to it. That's all we're trying to say. If you, we can try those those fringe wetland plants in that corner. I that's not a problem. And if that's how we feel we're mitigating this, um, then I applaud that, that that's certainly something we can explore. Does that make you feel at ease at all, Christine? Maybe, maybe not. Because, you know, I, you know, Nate, and I can sit down with a list of plants and agree on what would probably survive there. And with a few more borrowings, he and I could come up with exactly what you'd like, what would survive there? I don't want to put together a mitigation plan. It's not going to work. It doesn't make sense.
Okay.
If we have questions, that basically ends my presentation.
Have the audience come up?
Now, the only thing I'd like to mention here is that I've been to some of these meetings and the audience starts talking about things that are not wetlands oriented. And and if we would keep our questions, the wetlands aspect is appreciated.
Okay, now, the audience, anyone has anything, any questions? Okay, come on up and you can state your name for the record. And unfortunately, this is all wetlands, like you just stated.
Oh, no, I just found it interesting because I thought we went on a little journey with him earlier, but I'm going to keep my comments to wetlands for sure.
Great.
Uh, my name is Laura Sanderson. I'm a homeowner on Torrington Street. Um, my question relates to the memorandum you submitted related to the application. I had a specific question, excuse me, about item number five. I'm going to read it. Any activity which causes substantial diminuation of flow of a natural water course or groundwater levels of the wetland or water course. Your response was, since the wetlands will be entirely filled, groundwater levels will be altered. As a property owner, as I've already stated, with a well on my property, I'm just interested in knowing what the potential impact is to groundwater. Has that been discussed? I know Mr. Sorry, Standish indicated he hadn't done any hydrology, but that's something to me that when you're considering completely burying a wetland, um, it concerns me.
Now, and I'll just say, I'm sure you can call Mr. Stansfield to the to speak on that, but I know in my reading of this, I did, this was from the first memo that I did for whether or not consideration of a public hearing or not. And that specific point, um, Tom was stating that it's actually it's perched above the groundwater table, this wetland here. So it actually, I I would, I would withdraw my assessment in that way that it that there's a direct.
Okay, I didn't realize there was another memo. This is just the one that I read when preparing for this evening. Okay, so then I guess that's.
But Tom, did you want to clarify any of that? Does that seem like an accurate uh, representation that this is not, you had said before that this is not a ground, a wetland that's tapping into groundwater. It's it's perched above the groundwater table.
Just, um, thank you for your comment. That was excellent. And it's a common misconception that we look, we look at wetlands to be groundwater regenerators. We we look for them to be um, cleansing that water before it gets into your well, for example. But uh, in in 30 years of working with well drillers and and hydrology in that respect, I'm not a hydrologist, but this practical experience with this, um, these are not the waters that are affecting directly affecting your well. If you had a spring, I would say that's possible because that is drawing from surface waters. Your water is deep bedrock water. And maybe 50 years from now, that that water is getting into your well, but it's probably not even coming from this area. You know, it's it's from everywhere. I think, yeah, so and we're not eliminating the water, we're just. Does that make sense? You had concerns, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Now's your chance. Any questions? Any more questions? Concerns?
Come on up.
You're good? Okay. Okay, I guess.
I have a I have just one other question. I just, for the record, I'm curious. As far as the parking for this site is, um, Alan, was the calculation made based on what's going to be required for zoning? As far as that volume of parking for the addition or the needs of that potential proposed addition, because that is another, you know, it's just, yeah, what what's the alternative? Um, and it may be a smaller parking.
This was just a drawing I drew, but it was had some logic to it. The logic is they are literally out of parking places right now in the building. If I built an addition of 36,000 square feet and they hire another 50 employees, I added additional parking just for the existing need for employees and the the uh, the addition. It's kind of interesting because they are a very intense employee-based company. Some some places have high warehouse design. This is a very intense manufacturing design with a lot of well-paid people. And I laid out the parking that I thought was appropriate.
Did you do research on wet meadows?
Um, I didn't have anything specific to local conditions. No, I mean, in my, you know, in my professional opinion, you know, a wet meadow can be, you know, have just as many services as a forested wetland, you know, often they harbor unusual species and they're in a state of decline because of just the nature of these properties, but uh, I, yeah, I didn't have anything specific to this. Um, and, you know, no rare species were apparent during the site visit. I just say.
Any other questions? No. Um, now the issue, do we want to close the public hearing or do we want to wait and get more information on what they're going to plant and the water quality base and in the green areas around the field?
I mean, I'm unclear as to whether they want to revise um, the plan in any way. Uh, I I don't, I don't really want to make a decision this month whether we close the hearing or not. I want to.
If you would.
Look at the record.
If you would, I mean, the latitude to work with Nate on this, um, you know, we've worked together before, I I we we can come up with a species list for you and a planting scheme for you. Um, based on this plan, uh, we're not going to be able to change the topography anyhow very much, so. Um, you know, I think I think we could probably sit down and come up with something very satisfactory to you that that wouldn't be over the top for Alan and we can, we can experiment a little bit with that southeast corner. But if you if you give us the latitude, we're we're more than happy to work with Nate on that.
Okay, great.
Then I move that we table. Oh, did you have something more to say, Alan?
I was going to repeat that because actually Nate and I talked about it. And we we understood that we weren't going to solve the plantings at this point and we would work together. And I would provide plantings that would meet his requirements uh, at a later date.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I move that we table the public hearing.
Continue, yeah.
Oh, continue.
Yeah.
Continue the public hearing.
To the next.
To, uh, what what's that date? Do I need to know the date?
The next regular scheduled meeting.
September, second, second Tuesday in September.
Okay.
Or is it the first Tuesday?
I would just say the next regular scheduled meeting.
Regular.
If we could ask what 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 would be the purpose of the continuation?
So that we have a plan that we're, I I'd like to.
Oh, you'd rather, okay, you don't like that idea. That's fine. Okay. No, that was this is your suggestion.
I don't want to, I don't want to vote on a.
Well, and I and I don't.
An idea.
I just want to expand on what I understood Christine to say was that maybe integration of some low-impact development concepts that into the plan, I mean, my thought is uh, the required landscaping islands, right? Like, could there be cut-ins there and, you know, they're going to be required to be landscaping per planning and zoning requirements anyway? Could we integrate low-impact development in some way, um, even if it's not specifically designed even, we could, you know, get an approval with a condition of further design when Alan is at a point that it makes sense.
Well, it it would, and and I would argue very briefly for you that this is a conceptual plan. So we're doing this to see if the if it makes, if it's feasible economically to purchase this property. So if we're able to get a this case, a worst-case scenario kind of situation, but um, we could, we 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 will be coming in with a finalized plan, uh, which could have significant more detail for that, but it would depend on what we ended up actually meaning to build.
Right, and I did talk to our city planner about this because I I think the worry is that a concept might be approved and then the wetlands are completely cleared and the whole lot is cleared with the expectation of that development going forward in the future. And then something happens in the meantime and they're lost and forgotten and there's no approved plan with planning and zoning. So the way that, you know, he had wanted to see it was as far as as far as how that's going to work with planning and zoning. So I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. This is a wetlands approval without planning and zoning approval. Alan's indicated that he's not looking to go to planning and zoning anytime soon for an approval. We would, I would recommend conditions to any approval to say that while the demolition of structures on the building could be allowed, that there shouldn't be any grading or anything with a conceptual plan until there's something that planning and zoning can approve and that gets a, you know, a zoning and grading permit down the road.
Makes perfect sense for us.
Um, you know, I'm okay with a little bit. My recommendation would be a little bit more of a conceptual plan could be okay as long as there's not site work, assuming that that's the finalized plan and they just, Alan would stuff to come back to just get a revision to the plan prior to approval by planning and zoning and issuance of those.
Well, it makes perfect sense because we we this building may be narrower. Um, it depends on what the needs may be. So for us to come back, we we couldn't do anything, no matter what, without planning and zoning approval. Um, as far as implementing this plan, aside from perhaps tearing down our building or something like that, but as far as grading for the, it would be kind of productive for us to begin grading um, if we didn't even know what we're building yet.
Right, right.
Now, you're going by our word, I get that. So if you want more conceptual plans, we can work on those, but I I think that where we're where we're standing now with just this concept, um, you know, we we see some areas that could be um, further developed as far as mitigation, if you want to call it that. Um, we're happy to work with you on that. That that's not a problem, but if if we can get an idea that this concept can fly, um, then then we can move forward with with the purchase of the property and the development plan.
And so if the commission's okay with whatever concept is designed by the next meeting, um, you know, we could just stipulate in the conditions that, you know, a revision would be required prior to planning and zoning approval or any additional work, but to integrate concepts, I mean, I think of just like, you know, yeah, like uh, smaller basins in the planting islands for, you know, the plantings in there, say, or um, you know, a a native wild mix in a certain area of the property, right, that's an upland or a facultative mix that, you know, could capture some of the benefits of those wetlands without just, you know, resonating it all to to lawn, right? Something like that, but like in a conceptual, you know, with notes and that kind of thing to be worked out in the final spec. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, I, if we could have saved a month, we were happy to do that, but I understand your, I understand your position, so, thank you.
So would you, so in that case, you would leave the public hearing open?
I would leave the public hearing open so we can accept the.
Plan to review.
Revision.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So I move that we continue the public hearing in order to accept revision of the current plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Hey, thank you. Hey, next on the agenda, it's applicant William Clark, location 660 Torringford Street. Was it lot 143? Was it block 003?
Yep, lot 007.
And what's the zeros?
Lot, lot 007.
Lot 007, okay. Activity, resubdivide vacant lot into two building lots? Can we keep zoom?
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm sorry, we we're having some technical issues with the camera, so I'm just trying to. get that working again. And if we have to go without a camera, we'll just have to do that. Yeah, if you want to get started, that's fine. I'll, I'll work on this.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is William Todd Clark. I'm sorry, I'm awake. Um, I'm working from my phone. I did, uh, ask that the, uh, the owner, uh, be present. I, I believe he's there. Amir Kitazza, uh, Corka Enterprises. And I also have, uh, John Martucci, uh, our engineer, who's on, uh, via, um, a Zoom meeting as well for any questions. As you know, last month we went over this. We're proposing two lots on four point seven acres on the easterly side of Torrenford Street at six sixty Torrenford Street. Much of the property is, is surrounded by wetlands. Uh, we do have an existing, gravel driveway to the, uh, house sites now. It's been in for some time, uh, very firm gravel. We have a sanitary easement running through the property, which, uh, we're trying to work around that as well as working around the wetlands. And, um, uh, when we met last month, we still had some unresolved questions with the engineering, um, department. We've, uh, revised the driveway to match exactly what the, uh, city engineer would like to see. Uh, we've also taken care of, uh, any sewer easements that need to, uh, the existing sewer easements. And, uh, we've also proposed new sewer easements and new access easements for the city to get to their, uh, existing manholes that do run through the site. Uh, previously, um, we had talked about the houses. Each sitting on about, uh, third of an acre of, of what would be cleared land, inside of the, the wetlands. Most of the grading, uh, laterally from the wetlands. There's very little grading laterally from the houses. We do have a, a fair amount of separation between the, the downside of the house and the wetlands downgrade from us. Naturally, we like to have a little more land and, and in fact Nate, uh, brought that up in his last, uh, review comments. That he would like to see more separation between the, the, the houses and the wetlands. We've, we've held, uh, discussions with the owner about that, maybe trying to find some differently shaped houses, um, to fit in there a little better. But, uh, at that, at this point, I believe we've satisfied the concerns of the city engineer. And the comments we have from Nate are generally favorable, uh, in that we're not going to be, uh, harming the wetlands at all with this, uh, proposal.
How many square feet are these houses you're showing on the plan?
Uh, Amir, are you there? Can you, can you speak to that?
Alireh's not here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I believe it was, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet.
Because this is just conceptual, right? These houses aren't going to be built right away.
Right. He would naturally prefer this as the house he provided. You know, the first thing I mentioned to him was that they're kind of, they're kind of deep. Can we get, you know, shallower and, and depth? This, this is the house he prefers, so. Um, my thought is that, okay, we're not going to go any bigger than this. We're not going to go closer to wetlands if, if the commission's okay with this and, and any changes we, we make would be to the better.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the subdivision. I just kind of have a problem with the size of the houses.
Yeah, I can understand that.
I'd like to see a smaller footprint of a house. I mean, it could be approved, but if it was approved, there may be a stipulation that, just because we approved the subdivision doesn't mean we approved the size of the houses on the two lots.
Understood.
And that's kind of where I'm standing.
I, I agree.
And in my, uh, uh, memo from the wetland agent, aside from the standard conditions, the two additional conditions that I had recommended were, the surveyed wetlands boundaries shall be posted with metal markers within thirty days of filing of the map with the city clerk. With the design and spacing to be approved by the city of Torrington Wetland Enforcement Officer. We do have a policy that, uh, that shows that, you know, the general practice of posting fifty feet or at a flag corner. And we do have those, um, those signs made up at cost for a dollar fifty each so that, you know, makes this process easier for applicants. And then the other, the other condition, which I think gets to Jay's point, is that wetlands are, uh, just a, a condition specifically stating that wetlands approval of subdivision does not imply approval of concept design. The commission recommends the applicant propose greater separation between the homes and the wetlands when they submit new wetlands applications for single-family homes on each lot. So this is just for the application for the re-subdivision of the lot. And to build both of these homes, they would need separate inland wetlands approvals. Um, I guess they can do one at once, but, at that time, the commission's free to impose future conditions or consider those as they come up.
Okay, I'm sure we can handle the, uh, the marking and I understand about the, uh, house plans.
Okay. Anything else from commissioners?
The only thing that I would say is, um, and, and I guess we get a second, second bite at the apple when they come back to do the houses, but we might want to think about either a fence or some other sort of more permanent, uh, fixture along the wetland boundary and boulders from construction site or something along those lines, because yard creep is always going to be a problem, even with the markers every fifty feet. Those fall off trees, they get removed. It's just future consideration.
Yeah, and we do generally have those type of conditions for these type of things. Um, I never know with a concept, you know, with a concept for a, a re-subdivision, it's like, you know, I feel like as long as we're not committal to the concept, uh, formally, you know, we can impose conditions to get at that point.
Yeah, I, I would agree that, that where the footprint of what the usable yard is so small and completely surrounded by wetlands, that there needs to be some type of, um, barrier. I think the markers are good, but also just like a physical, like boulders, I think, would be probably.
Yeah, they don't move easily.
Right, good, and good, and good for the site. Like, it would, it would keep, it's not like having your woods fenced off from you, like, so, but, but it, uh, prevents equipment from getting in there and I think that that's a, a good idea.
Sure, we can add this, add to the drawing. Sure.
Okay.
Just can I have a motion?
Sure. I move that we grant the permit for wetlands application WP twenty-five eighteen by applicant William Clark for location six sixty Torrenford Street, assessors map one forty-three block zero zero three lot zero zero seven for the re-subdivision of a vacant lot into two building lots. With the eleven standard conditions plus number twelve, the surveyed wetland boundaries shall be posted with metal markers within thirty days of filing the map with the city clerk with design and spacing to be approved by the city of Torrington Wetland Enforcement Officer. For thirteen, the wetlands approval of subdivision does not imply approval of the concept design. The commission recommends the applicant propose greater separation between the homes and the wetlands when they submit new wetlands application for the single-family homes on each lot. And number fourteen, that when those new wetlands applications for single-family homes are submitted, that boulders, uh, are placed as barriers to prevent yard creep.
Can I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here for the beginning part of this.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next is new business of which there's none. And next is staff report and the enforcement report on five sixteen Mountain Road.
Okay, so, uh, as of the last meeting, um, which was the, uh, July meeting, early July, the commission, uh, gave Mr. Mazzarelli, uh, again, I'm, I'm not remembering the exact timeline here, but they gave them a deadline to engage with um, professionals and provide a contract stating that engagement or the city would, you know, would, would, uh, pursue legal action and citations. As a part of that conversation, Jay read the cease and correct order, which had a number of other conditions, including the stop, stop of work. And, you know, a few other things. Mr. Mazzarelli did sign a contract with a soil scientist, with a survey on board as a team and with the understanding that they would have an engineer to stamp whatever design that they had or work with them to develop, you know, if needed be. In the meantime, they just wanted to kind of wrap their head around what the existing conditions on the site are. And kind of move forward in tandem with the commission as far as, you know, what needs to happen, um, engineering-wise. So, you know, upon, upon doing that, you know, it was the understanding that we were going to kind of just pursue with them. Clint Webb, who was that professional, um, provided me with, uh, he just provided me with an update actually that says, they're going to have, basically, the goal is to have a baseline and a starting point for conversation by the September meeting. So he, you know, they're in the middle of summer projects. They just got called on, so they didn't have time to mobilize immediately, but that, that's, that's the plan there. I believe it was the end of last week or a couple of weeks ago. I heard from the city planner that there was a considerable amount of activity continuing on the site. We had had conversations with Mr. Mazzarelli and his agents that, you know, the site could be stabilized, but that we didn't want additional grading, like no changing of grades of anything that's already there, laying of topsoil and seed and anything that could be approved by a professional even, right? So if there was like a temporary measure that a professional could, you know, give us at least verbal confirmation was an acceptable measure would be okay. So we noticed that they were bringing more material in, which is, you know, could have been fine. It was probably mostly or if not all topsoil. But then I went out on a second inspection somewhere else and noted that they had, you know, that Mr. Mazzarelli was on his excavator and he was adjusting grades on the face of the, the kind of waterfall slope area there. So I did send a cease and, I mean, I sent a citation for both zoning and inland wetlands. It was a single citation of each, and then he was given fourteen days to comply, or it would become daily citations. He came in, was displeased, but ultimately, when I was there today, he's not continuing any work on the site. And he seems to be, you know, willing to move forward and, and kind of closer communication with us on what he wants to do to stabilize the site. And, and, um, yeah, and just moving forward to, to try to get this taken care of. Mr., uh, Marty Connor is back on the project again. Um, he was on the team and then kind of removed himself from the team. And he came in today and says he's back on the team to try to help facilitate the process, which I see as a positive. I just told him to like, figure out how they're going to, you know, coordinate communications, because there's a lot of different people involved and it's difficult for me to kind of communicate, you know, basic requirements and to a number of different people. It's easier to have like a single-point person for, for everything that can disseminate from there. But I think overall, um, Mr. Mazzarelli came in again after his first time he came in and seemed, you know, willing to participate and move forward. And so, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to reach a, a resolution through the professionals on this. That was very long-winded.
We usually don't have anybody speak.
Well, I'm a member of Mazzarelli team and I have a question for Nate Nardi Cyrus regarding the citation.
That should be brought up by Mr. Mazzarelli.
I'm a member of his team. I'm noted as being a member of his team. You're denying me my rights.
Is he noted as, is he a member of the team?
Yeah, I, yeah.
She's not on the agenda.
You're denying me my rights to speak publicly?
You don't have any rights to speak publicly. No, it's not a public hearing.
Nate, can I speak to you directly?
Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not in control of the meeting, so, um.
Well, I'll tell you what, you, you can ask a question.
That's all I'm asking.
But that's it.
That's all I'm doing.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Joe Paganini. I'm a member of the, uh, Mazzarelli team. And, uh, I have a question for Nate regarding the zoning citation notice, uh, zero zero six seven eight. Uh, we want to respond to this notice and, uh, we have a problem.
That's a, that's a.
The question is coming.
Okay, well.
Just give me a second.
Question.
So the question is, in the section, um, in the, um, citation, it suggests section seven point three, and it says, no person shall do any grading or, um, stripping or otherwise disturb any section without approval for grading permit. Now,
That's your question.
Section seven, my question is, why does section seven point three point two in the Torrington zoning regulations state there's an exception for agricultural land?
So, I mean, I, this is unrelated to wetlands right now because it's zoning.
Okay, if this is zoning, then.
But I, I can talk to, I can talk to Clint about that.
But you referenced seven point three.
Uh, I don't have my book right with me right now, but I do know that any expansion of cropland is not subject, is, is subject to zoning, to a grading permit. So, but we, but we can have Cliff, I mean Clint, contact me and I can go over the specifics, but it's Mr. Mazzarelli never gave any indication that that waterfall area had anything to do with agriculture. So I can't assume that it is if he's not expressing that that is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take care of that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next, three ninety-four Main Street?
Uh, all right. So is Ryan Nelson is on the line. So this is, um, this was an enforcement action. Uh, we had a property on Main Street. I observed from city-owned property across the way from this property. So the property is separated by the Noggetuck River. On the city-owned land, I observed this property had been filling within the Noggetuck River, um, of debris with bricks. Um, looked like a nu- number of new deposits in the river area. So I sent a, a simple notice of violation for, because it didn't look like it was immediate, maybe within the past year, for violation of, uh, floodplain regulations and of zoning regulations. The owner was extremely cooperative, reached right back out to me, had a tenant who was a chimney sweep and it was all clearly like demolished chimneys in the river. And so he immediately, um, kind of scheduled the site visit. I told him to get a wetlands professional. Uh, he did and, and he's engaged with that wetlands professional. And so Ryan Nelson, he is that professional. He's on the meeting right now. And so, um, he said he'd be willing to, to speak about, you know, the violation and next steps from his perspective.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Ryan Nelson from Silverbrook Environmental. Um, I'm a registered soil scientist. I inspected the site in July, um, after Nate and the property owner, I had a conversation with them. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Let me know if you can see these photos.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, yep. Similar to what Nate said, this is the material. Um, it looks like brick and mortar that had been, you know, broken apart and dumped into the river. I had looked at the adjacent kind of reference bank areas. And see some remnants of a, a flue within the chimney, probably some more brick. This is the backyard area, so behind the fence at the rear on the east side of the property. Uh, this is just south of the dump site. You can see the natural, so to speak, bank is native stones that have been mortared in place probably to shore up the river decades ago. Um, so that probably is what the pre-existing conditions are underneath that pile of bricks. So, um, I sent a, a brief report to Nate early. So I sent a brief report to Nate earlier. My plan for corrective action would be to access the site via the existing paved driveway alongside the house to get to the backyard. And with either a excavator or a bobcat nearby, by hand, we would remove the brick and large pieces into the bucket of the machine, put it in a dump truck, and dispose of it legally off-site. Trying to not disturb the bank to best of our abilities, just kind of removing all the surface debris as well as those larger items within the stream itself. I did, or I would also like the commission to be aware, this is also within the flood zone. So this could potentially be, you know, an obstruction within, within the floodway of the river, so obviously important to have that removed. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So how are you planning on removing all of it?
So this material within the river will be picked up by hand, it's mostly all large blocks and whatever. There wasn't really much for soils or finds within it. My plan is to have a, either a skid steer and excavator right here at the fence, put that material into the bucket, then load it into a truck and take it offsite.
And just to clarify, Ryan, so when we get to the point of, you know, at this point, the commission generally wants to approve a plan showing, you know, the, basically specifying the sequence of removal and, and in the restoration that might need to happen. Your recommendations of that as far as stabilization of the bank, potential plantings, all of that, so that once that's approved, then the restoration work would be overseen via that permit.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure to what degree detail the commission is looking for. It appears that underneath this material is, like you said, a hard rock gravelly substrate. Didn't appear to be really any vegetation, woody vegetation growing in this vicinity behind the fence. Not sure what there is for actual underlying soil without doing further disturbance, but if the commission feels they have requirements for certain things, happy to accommodate.
Potentially like a planting, maybe not in the immediate bank, but in the adjacent floodplain area.
Just thinking if it's mortared natural river rocks, like what are you?
Yeah, well, I just mean up, up, I mean, the upslope of that, even if it's not like
Is that just like to stabilize? Well, is there something you'd suggest?
Potentially, if you, well, I don't know, it's just a, this is just my thought, but, you know, even if it's not a natural area, right, there's that fence and then it's like a yard area. I don't remember exactly if there's a lot of trees down there near the bottom there, but just planting shade trees in the bottom portion of there to act as stabilization and just a form of mitigation for, you know, for the corrective action. I mean, it, maybe it doesn't make sense in this case, again, if it's all river rock, I'm just trying to think of potential options.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, I, I think that perhaps we, we just trust him to work with you and trust your judgment on it as is, does he have to, he has to submit a wetlands application for this?
Well, I guess it's up to you on this, I mean, I, again, if he's not planning on re-grading and they're just going to remove material there with that, we could just consider it a yeah, we could do something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, some of the images now, and I'm not seeing, I'm seeing trees kind of in that lower area. I didn't remember if it was just like grass all the way down to the edge, but Ryan, could you scroll back one picture?
It might be nice if you can get some of that knotweed out of there, although it may be, I mean, it looks like the whole bank is probably, yeah.
Might be futile.
It's hard for me to tell how much is there.
So that fence is, is basically the river line, so there is that large tree already over in that area that's shading around that area anyway. I don't know, can you identify that from, is that a, is that a beach?
Looks like it, yes. Yep, so the dumped area is right here by the fence door or gate. So, near those trees.
Yeah, so I'll leave it, I mean, if you want to, if the commission wants to authorize me to do an agent permit and just, you know, monitor for, again, if they're only going to have a skid steer down there to load stuff up, part of me is like, well, we want to do protection for the trees or anything, but I think it's, it'll only be there for small piece of equipment for a limited period of time.
I'm fine with authorizing you to do it as an agent permit and using your discretion as far as if any plantings are needed once the, once the bricks and mortar are removed, that's what.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't feel comfortable conditioning the permit in that case, but I can just, I guess if, I'll just use these minutes to, in that I'm being delegated, I guess, and, and I'll just work with the landowner to come to something minimal and reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next is 2904 Winston Road.
So this is the Frigail property. I, I have heard back from the project leader on that, and that's Tim Wiley, he's a surveyor. He was part of the team that did AJK 3350 Winston Road, and that team worked really well to, to iron that whole mess out. So he'd be working with Ian Cole, who was also on that other project and many others. And, and I, that one will be complicated because of the floodplain issues there, so they have not yet retained an engineer. But similarly to where we were at with, with Mountain Road, I just, you know, I indicated to him that he should, they should work on existing conditions and grades and, and have, have an initial meeting there. This is a property that's like, there's been Army Corps action, there was a bridge illegally constructed in the floodway that's still there, and a bunch of violated permits along the way, so right now there's wetland citations on that property. But it does, you know, it did seem like it really was the engineer had been kind of slow playing it, and once he switched to a new team, they seemed more engaged, so. I, I'm still holding back on zoning citations, because I was considering imposing those for the floodplain violations. Or not even the floodplain violations, they're also not, they never got a site plan for that site, and they, they do enough material processing that they need to have a earth excavation permit, so with a two-year update, and they've never called back for any updates. So I was going to, you know, I was kind of holding that as a last resort to go to zoning citations as well, but I, again, I want to give them, I don't want it to be because of his hired team delays as much as we can. At a certain point, I have to, we have to move forward, but give it to the next meeting, I guess, and if they're, you know. I, I did ask him to come today and present. But that may have gotten miscommunicated to Tim Wiley, so I'll reach out to him. But, yeah, if there's no movement by the next meeting, I'm going to issue zoning citations. What?
Were still involved?
No, they, uh, no. The last, I don't, I, that's something that I would ask the applicant to check in on the status of that enforcement. I mean, I can as well, but the last I heard, they hadn't, they hadn't pursued it anymore, so. But I mean, even if wetlands doesn't address it, it's going to have to get a floodplain permit, and it's not, you know, I don't think the commission is going to consider it to be a non, pre-existing non-conformity, so especially since they tried to get it to remove it in recent history, so. Anyway, we'll just keep on dragging them closer.
Okay.
Okay, I guess next is agent determinations.
Uh, just one, 364 Nottingham Hill Gate, Chad in the Upland Review area. Be basic.
Okay. Yes, next is adjournment.
I move we adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.